I am the President of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Recording in progress.
To a regular session of Goldendale City Council for February 7th, 2022. On the roll call, we have two council members who are expected to miss the meeting tonight, Lauren Magar and Steve Johnston. We have a motion to excuse these two. They've both called in.
I'm moving.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to excuse Lauren Magar and Steve Johnston from attendance at Goldendale City Council for February 7th, 2022. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The next item is the agenda and the consent agenda. We need a motion to approve those.
So.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda and consent agenda for the city council meeting tonight. There's not any questions or amendments? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. The next item will be from, and let's see how that's going to go, Connie. Ruby Urban will be on Zoom to present her report on solid waste activities and things that we need to be aware of.
Yep. Oh, I gotta take my damn notice. Trying to take my mute off. It is off now. Ruby and Michelle's on here.
Pardon?
Are you guys ready? You've got to turn your mics off on.
Yep.
There we go.
Thank you, Ruby, very much. Please go ahead.
Mayor, it's good to see you. My update is going to be relatively short, and I'll let Michelle finish it out. I have a legislative update for a House bill, 799, which is an organic management bill. I don't know how closely you're following some of this. Most of our other bills have pretty much died, but as you know, they'll probably come back in a different form next year. So the big EPR bill, that one's out. Of course, there was a couple of other ones that we were kind of hoping would pass it. Didn't like the litter bill and, you know, the wind turbine recycling. So with the organic management bill, it's going into appropriations, and we'll see what happens when it comes out on the other side. If this passes, it is going to have an impact on especially our county because it's going to require new equipment. It's going to require our holler to cooperate for us to follow a lot of the law. So we'll see what comes down, and I can update you on our next update on where that goes. So it is going to be pretty important. It is going to impact us, so trying to keep an eye on it will definitely be important. We are asking for some of the language to get changed if we're going to pass it. So the other thing, too, is Republic Services is looking over there in the industrial park at some of the land, so we're still waiting to hear back from Larry on that so that we can move forward. So as soon as somebody's got some information on that, it'd be nice to be able to get that ball rolling. In terms of pretty much everything else, I think the majority of it is just our programs that we've got going on, so I'm going to go ahead and let Michelle take that over. Is there any questions that you guys have for me before I pass it over?
Counsel, any questions? No? Fine. Thank you, Urban.
You bet. All right, Michelle. Nope, can't hear you.
Can't hear you.
Yeah, I think she's having some problems with her mic. So she's going to have to call in in order for the audio.
Okay.
Did you want me to go ahead and do it, or are you calling in? What? All right. Well, let me find her update real quick. All right, so we've been approved for two grants. Three, if you want to count the red grant. And they kind of go until 2023, so we've got a lot of room for programs and activities. One of the things that we're going to be doing, of course, is organics because that's the big thing that's going on with Washington State right now. They're trying to push a lot of food off of the landfill. And since they feel that that's about one-third of what goes into a landfill, they're really pushing to try to do something else with it. So we have talked with dirt huggers, and we have a couple of agreements that are going to be taking place, so it will be, you know, pretty helpful. So keep eyes open for that. And then, of course, our contamination reduction. We're going to be doing another audit here pretty soon so we can see how well we're doing with our contamination and the recycling. Let's see, so we've got some education going on and.
Not mine, no.
Oh, there you go. Go for it.
Okay. So with the contamination reduction, we're going to have a special collection program, and that will be adding some additional recyclable materials that will not be done through Republic Services. We're going to start out with two materials, being plastic bags that will also include other fueling products.
Which, by the way, that died in the legislative session, so plastic bags are still going to be legal. But like I said, that'll come back next year. I guarantee it.
Yeah, I think our program's based around, you know, legislation. It's all headed in that way, so even if it's not now, it will eventually. So teaching people to, you know, reduce their waste and reduce their food waste and go with reusable is all where our programs are headed. But that will be one of the materials, is plastic bags, failing flying. And then if those are successful, we'll add styrofoam in as well. They have good markets for those materials, but they have to be sort of separated. They cannot.
Oops, all right, dude.
Oh, did we lose you?
Yeah.
We lost Michelle. Okay, well, she's trying to get back on. Oh, yeah, are you back on?
Yeah, I needed you to present. And personal education is going to be a large component of what we have this year going into next year. Teaching the residents how to make environmentally sound decisions is super important. So we're going to be putting together some educational kits that can be checked out by the residents for free geared towards everybody, so school age and up to the homes and businesses. One of the kits is going to be a waste auditing kit. You can't reduce our waste. You must understand what is in our waste. So being able to kind of give that.
How much we actually produce.
We have. I think us over the last month or two months have seen how much waste we really produce in our own households. So really, it's a good time to kind of take a step back and figure out where you can step back in your own home. We're going to be working on an environmental summit conference. That will be in 2023 to give us enough time to plan it. We're planning on having guest speakers and local organizations, everybody dealing with the environment. We have a lot of organizations in our Columbia Gorge area, really, some local dams and fisheries parks. We have the new climate action group. So that will start getting worked out this summer. We have an ambassador program we're going to be starting. Ruby and I are a great team, and we try to get as much information out to the public, but we are also still only me and her. And in order to get the information out for our large county, we need the help of residents. So we're going to start trying to get little local task forces really and have people be able to get that information to share. Lastly, but not least, is our litter program. And we have begun a new program called Litter Pitter, kind of like Get or Done. We are also meeting new members to help us with this program. We can only collect so much litter, and the amount of litter in that county is out of control. We have a great tourism market in this area, which is great, but it also brings additional trash and also, you know, just brings more people. And trash cans go up, and we have to win. The trash ends up out on the roadway. So people can check out kits and perform their own little litter cleanup with their friends and neighbors or workers, and hopefully we can get some of the trash clean up of our streets. You guys probably spoke in this whole London by now. We're working on doing a Goldendale Citywide cleanup event. The West Side has one in Wyman and Vision area every year, and it's been very successful. And we would love to be able to have one on the Goldendale side. And the vision for that would be to have the Goldendale Chamber lead on that and then have you, the Goldendale City Council, as well as volunteers and any businesses that are willing to participate and volunteer, whether it be donating their time, their resources, or their money. The event does take a large task force. We'll probably have to start smaller and just kind of pick and choose the items that we want to have collection, but not everybody has the ability to build a transfer station and having something close by that maybe they can get their trash to. Even having offering trucks that can drive around to collect some street will be helpful and try to get Goldendale cleaned out, especially this year, being, you know, we're expecting more tourists to come in for the different opportunities that the Chamber is going to be hosting. So, yeah, that's kind of what we got going on in our area, and we look forward to working closer with you guys on some of the events and activities.
But I got two more things. I'm glad you mentioned a couple of things that kind of got me to remember. So with litter, we have had conversations regarding having work crews, which would actually help with the snow shoveling in the winter time and, of course, other tasks, not necessarily associated to litter, but at least associated with doing stuff around the county where we could utilize the litter crew labor or, you know, people out of the jail. So we are working on that, and I know that you guys brought it up in your last council meeting, so we will try to circle back around to you guys to continue having those conversations. And then another thing, too, is that there was something out on Facebook here not too terribly long ago regarding hauling trash to the transfer stations, and I just wanted to remind the city that even though that's a really good way of maybe helping out or getting back to the community, it's necessary to not make it into a business because if it goes into a business, it becomes a legal issue. And Republic Services really does have a lot more money than we do. So I don't want that to become a legal issue, so I just want you to make sure that you cross all your Ts and dot all your Is and make sure that people in the city are aware of that. That's pretty much all I have. Any questions?
Very good. Counsel, do you have questions for the solid waste department and the report they've given?
What was that last comment again, Ruby? For the city should be.
Regarding garbage hauling.
Yeah, what that last comment that the city should be aware of?
The city needs to be aware that there could be legal implications for somebody who wants to make that into a business. So, you know, whether it's a private business or an actual legit business, it just needs to be known that there are definitely some legal issues that could be associated with that if it goes beyond, you know, just a basic cleanup event.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, thank you.
Any further comments or questions from the council? We want to thank both of you for keeping us up to date and for reporting so regularly. Thank you both.
Thank you, Mayor.
We'll go on now to our department reports. We'll begin with Chief Jay Hanzacher.
Hey, Mayor. I don't have much tonight. Myself and Sergeant Spence, we just got done with public information officer training. It was very good training. Talking with the instructor that has been in the public information business for 30-plus years, just started doing training for law enforcement, and the Goldendale Police Department, along with the Sheriff's Office, is going to host a training for that instructor to come here, and that's already been put into work, so we're looking around May 10th and 11th for that so we can get more officers into it from surrounding areas that do need some of the training. It was very valuable and very good, so other than that, I don't have anything else right now.
Thank you. Appreciate that type of program, too. Steve, Fire Department?
Fire Department, I would, first of all, I'd take the opportunity to thank you, Counsel and Mayor for the word, but you guys voted to increase the firefighters' pay, and I think with that being said, I've seen a change in the morale to a certain degree, attendance down at the fire hall. So I want to give you guys thanks for that. Anyways, calls to date, we're at 15 calls to date for this year for service, and then I'll just throw it out there, we're always looking for volunteers, so.
Very good. We can help with that type of, trying to help find volunteers. Let us know.
You bet.
Happy to work with you.
We have seen an uptick in that, you know, but we're still not full staff.
Sure. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Also mentioned what Noah mentioned to us earlier tonight, or this afternoon, he mentioned that they've been using the light pack.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Much more use than we would have expected, so we're really happy about that.
We really have, yeah.
Yeah.
I guess I should say, we couldn't do that without our EMTs, though, too, that we have on our department.
How many EMTs are in the department?
Three or four?
Four. Excellent. That's good. Thank you, Steve. Thank you very much. Larry, is Doug on the line for Public Works?
No.
Okay, we'll go on then to council business. And we'll begin with an update on the airport bid documents from Corley McFarland, led that project for us. Corley, are you on the line?
He's showing, but it's, there he goes.
Give me a second here. I think I'm hitting the right button. How do you hear me, Mayor Cannon?
Doing fine. Glad to hear from you.
Me, too. Larry, any in briefing from you? Do you want me to just kind of launch in and kind of give an update and some background since it's been a while since I've talked with the council and then just talk about where I think we should head?
Sounds good.
Sounds good. If it's all right with the council, just a quick introduction, somebody you haven't met. So Corley McFarland with Precision Approach Engineering, and it's been fun to work with Larry Bellamy and Mayor Cannon on the project with the Goldendale Municipal Airport, the fuel system, our primary focus. And it kind of has been a circuitous project, but it's been a fun one, and I think we are making progress, as you'll see today. So with that, I'll launch in. If you don't mind, I can share my screen and kind of just walk through some of my updates.
Well, my projector isn't working tonight for some reason.
Oh, well, that's all right. We can just talk through it. You can give an idea. So.
What does that say? Hit my wave.
Just a minute, Corley. We were trying to get your screen up.
If it works, great. If not, no problem either.
No signal.
No signal.
There's one little transformer that looks like it's all the way plugged in on the power source.
I knew it was at the other meeting. It's down at the bottom. It's not plugged in. Yeah, now the light's on.
Wonder if it's a worker now. We're going to continue to try, Corley. Just hang on.
Yeah, no problem.
It's got a beep up here. First part's off.
Every time I have computer problems, they just say, "Did you turn it off and on?" Yeah.
And then you kick it.
Count to 30. Turn it off, count to 30.
Yeah.
Whatever the 10 or 20, 30. Or else you go find the egg that's first in the room.
Yeah, I don't know what to do. Usually not me.
Takes forever for it to beep.
I think I'm the youngest one in here. I'm 36, so.
I have no problem. There's a lot.
Yeah, you're a couple of years younger, huh?
What do you think, Phil?
We can go on if it turns on. I just feel like it's still.
Go ahead, Corley. We don't have a screen.
That's all right. Larry can point to some of the drawings. Are the drawings still on the wall, Larry?
There's a couple of them.
Perfect, perfect. Well, some of us here probably have the benefit of following along on this project as closely as you and I have, so you can point to the area when we get there. So I last briefed the council in September, and that was right after we received the bids for the second part of this project, and that's the site development work, so the actual earthwork and paving work to put the first phase of the project, the actual fuel system equipment, into play. And so, because this has been stretched out a little bit, the fuel system equipment contract was issued in April of last year, and that one fabrication's underway. There have been some delays due to buying chain issues, but we're proceeding on that work. And what we're here to talk about specifically tonight is where we left off last September, and that's with the site development, site improvements. And so when we opened that first bid, the cost succeeded, the available grant funded, and as we recommended, the city council rejected, we're leaving that contract. And then we are getting the homework.
The projector's working now. Do you want to?
Perfect. Let's see. If you want to give me screen sharing. Doesn't quite look like I've been approved yet. Just share my screen.
I have that one can participate at a time checked. Do I have to do something with you?
Yeah, you have to give me approval. Should be like in the settings, enable presenter or enable host, co-host.
I don't know where to go.
Try the share and then the second option. Sorry, not this one. On the last that you pulled up?
No. That's what came up.
Yeah, close that.
Huh?
Close that. Little arrow.
That worked.
There we go. All right, stand by here.
Did it work?
It did. Give me a second here.
Thank you, Phil.
Technology, right? All right. So does everybody see my slide there recap of progress to date?
Yeah. Yes.
You see that?
Yeah.
Okay, so as you're talking, kind of here on item B, subpoint one, we were given the homework last September to evaluate some additional information we've gotten from the Federal Aviation Administration with regard to airspace penetration for hangar development. And just kind of as a reminder for this group, although the Goldendale Municipal Airport is not subject to, or eligible for FAA funding, this airspace constraint is something we recommend that the city follow to the best that they can to protect the development potential in the future for the airport. And so the specific homework we were given was this airspace analysis and then redesigning the fuel system site development work to reduce the cost and bring more than the grant funds and then refine the layout compatible with some of the current hangar development interests that's presented here for. And then we also took the action out and evaluated some of the work that could be performed by others, specifically some things the city could take on to reduce those project costs. And so at the end of September of last year, we met with the airport committee and discussed some additional layout alternatives to satisfy the goals that we were tasked with, and then spent the last few months further refining this layout alternative for compatibility with hangar development and site constraints and allowable budget. And so here is the change that we all last talked on the project, and what we've done, and I've got a zoomed-in picture on the next slide, but I just kind of wanted to give everybody an overview here at the airport, let you get your bearings. So Fairgrounds Road is over here on the right side of the screen, the existing hangar development, also on the right side of the screen, the runway's at the bottom of the screen, and then the existing aircraft parking is shown there kind of in the middle, left part of the screen. And so as a reminder, before the area we were looking at developing was over on the left side of the screen where you see some of this construction material. That was the initially selected fuel system option, but passed with the constraints that we have, primarily getting within budget. We reevaluated and found that we're going to move the fuel system to the location shown here in red. And the primary benefit there is, one, it shortens the run in the existing electrical infrastructure, and, two, it allows us to use a lot of the existing apron for aircraft fueling so the aircraft can access the fuel system. Obviously, that comes with the penalty of losing one of your aircraft parking positions for your tie-downs. And in specific, the layout of the fuel system itself is the zoomed-in view right on the fuel system, so the tank here in the middle screen and then the fuel skid. The layout configuration is very similar to what we had before, but I just wanted to share that with the group of kind of what the orientation of this system is going to be. So with that, just to recap and give our recommendation where we recommend going, we've completed our work. We redesigned the fuel system consistent with the available funding, and we passed the city, Larry and I talked, passed the city to stay within budget for certain elements of the construction, and primarily that'll be the electrical trenching, so digging the trench for electrical. so digging the trench for electrical installation by others, and then improvements to the vehicle access point at the airport to bring that up to the county's commercial vehicle access standards. And then, at this point, tonight, our recommendation is we move forward with advertising the site development bid package, so the construction commences spring and summer, and then that'll be followed by installation of the fuel equipment that's currently under fabrication. And then the next check-in that I anticipated, the bid will be open in March, followed by a presentation at the council along with our recommendation of whether or not we move forward with the site development contract. So, with that, Larry, any thing you want going, or anything I missed? I'll just open it up for questions.
I think that brings us up to date, just hopeful that we get a little bit better bid package, and knowing that it's a better time of year to, to do that, hopefully the contractors are a little bit more hungry than they were last year. And we've done a little bit more, we've advertised a little bit farther and wider, we advertise in the Portland Daily Journal of Commerce, the Yakima Herald, Tri-City Herald, and the Goldendale Sentinel. So, we've expanded our, the length at which we will go to try to get people interested in bidding at this, this project.
Yeah, that's a good reminder, Larry, and some of the other things we've done to kind of increase interest, as Larry said, bid timing, improving the bid spot for timing of bids, contractors' books aren't full yet. And then I'd also contacted both one of the prior bidders, we received two bids last time as a reminder, but contacted one of the prior bidders to make sure they're still interested, and then also trying to drum up interest from other potential contractors. All things that should contribute to more bidders and thus hopefully a lower price.
I just, Corey, maybe you mentioned it, but where would the jet fuel tank be someday?
So, let me work back here, and let's see, see how the zoom-in skills are. So, what we set up here is we set this system up so that it's expandable, and the jet tank can go about in this location, and then the airport will have a, a decision to make. But with this configuration, obviously, it would take an additional parking spot, potentially two parking spots more if there's a helicopter fueling operations that are going to occur. And so, there would have to be some ramp expansion somewhere else on the airport. So, that, that's our vision, and kind of how we've ensured compatibility, make sure the jet...
Yeah, okay, thank you.
...goes out in future.
Yeah, thank you. Any questions or comments?
This is Lauren, I just wondered if we should invite all the previous bidders to consider bidding again?
And I definitely will, I just, I happen to, one of the bidders is a contractor that we are working with on another project, so I mentioned to them, but yeah, that's a very good point, I will also pick it up with the other bidder from the, from the primary bid, or from the prior bid, thank you.
I guess, this is Lauren, I guess curious from the, maybe the airport committee, what the vision is for any further development or our next investment out of the airport?
Probably, probably Lauren, the hangar lots is our next, next, our next priority, I guess, is to try to set up for hangar lots, and we've been kind of dealing with that all the way along. The FAA standards are something that we have to, to consider, we have, we have private property owner issues that we have to consider, and there's some planning issues that we have to also take a look at as well. I think that would cover it, don't you think, Corey, or was there something else I missed?
No, I think you're right, I'll just remind the group, we're a couple of months away from the Washington State Department of Transportation Aviation Division grant application cycle. So, it's always an opportunity, and Larry's been good about putting in grants in past years, one hasn't been awarded recently, but I would encourage, encourage the airport, and I'll check in with Larry when that grant cycles live, and we'll, we'll put one in, and so I think that could be a grant, although they won't pay for hangars specifically, we could potentially get a grant that's funded at ninety-five percent, walk state, five percent local, to construct some of the infrastructure leading to those hangars.
But Corey, that would not include the extension of the runway?
It, it could, I think that, the runway extension project will take a little bit more coordination with Washdaw before they, I think they will consider it a justified project, I think that one's going to take a little bit of additional discussion with them. I think the other component of that, that I've seen the airport committee track and that we've helped with in a preliminary mode, is the widening of the runway. So, it's always another good one that I do think Washdaw would fund from a safety standpoint.
Right.
I think improving the safety of that runway will hopefully get good Department of Transportation support for, for what we're trying to do at that airport. It'll make quite a difference to have a wider, safer, longer airport runway. Thank you, Corley, any other questions for Corley or comments?
What's the, what's the need for, regional need for helicopter fueling in the area, especially with respect to wild, fighting wildfires?
Yes. I probably don't have to want to answer, but that was the purpose of that, need for helicopters and DNR firefighting support.
Right, the DNR is not, I'm sorry, Lauren, this is Mylan, the DNR is not going to be using their own ground, or they said about two years ago, they will use our airport for landing and having their own vehicles out there, and when, when the DNR brings the helicopters in, it's, it's more than just a helicopter, they have to bring in their truck, because it's sort of like a, uh, what am I saying, it's a, I forgot the word, but anyway, they use a number of trucks to, to run that helicopter.
And our facility is sufficient enough to provide for that now, or is there additional work that needs to be done to better serve them?
No, but we would have to, right now, they'll just go ahead and park out there, but then, when we get that jet fuel in someday, well, then that would be a, a benefit. But as of now, they'll just park out there, and they'll have plenty of room for the trucks, a couple of trucks that they'll be bringing in, and so, yeah.
Thank you, Mylan.
This is your club team, and we, I think we talked at some point about being able to bring Liflight in, their helicopter and a fixed wing, which would necessitate the widening and lengthening of the runway as well, since they fly a Pilatus out of that. Is that something that's, it's on the radar schedule for you guys?
It's part of the longer range plan, certainly, Lauren.
Larry, correct me, I, I think Liflight, the Pilatus operates out of their Sauma brothers, doesn't it?
Say that again?
Isn't Liflight flying in to the airport now with the Pilatus, with their fixed wing aircraft?
Sometimes they do when there's a need, most of the time, the Liflight operates a helicopter, I believe, out of, and it lands at the hospital, and if they do have a need for a fixed wing, then they do try to make arrangements at the Goldendale Airport to do that. I've had a couple of calls to respond to that need sometimes in time.
And so, I think, right, a widening project, and a Pilatus is very capable of operating on the current length, but I think a widening project to bring it up to Washdaw standards would, again, would be a viable project, if it was washed up on it.
What, what kind of opportunities does the Federal Infrastructure JAWS Act bring in terms of grant funding or, or low-interest loans related to transportation infrastructure for airports?
Larry, do you want me to take that one, or?
Yes, I would.
So, Goldendale, I mentioned it just real quick, so I'll expand on a little bit with that question, the Goldendale Municipal Airport is not within, it's called the National Plan of Integrated Airport Systems, so it is a non-nipponist airport, and what that means is, specific to traditional airport funding dollars at the federal level, the airport is not eligible. Now, I'm not saying maybe some of the money that trickles down to the state might, you know, there might be ways to access that and unlock it for the airport, but that direct access to that federal money through the traditional FAA funding sources, as well as the infrastructure investment JAWS Act from, for airports, this airport will not be eligible for, unfortunately.
Corley, do you see that as an insurmountable, insurmountable obstacle to providing continued support for the airport? We feel it's a very important part for the community, but funding complications can certainly cause us a lot of difficulties.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think what I've seen as I've gotten to work with, with Larry and Mayor Cannon is, I think you turn that into an opportunity for the airport, and what I mean by that, right? Dallasport is saddled, I mean, those FAA dollars are great, Dallasport gets a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in federal money, but those come with quite a few strings. And so, I think, right, as I, as I've kind of helped this group and seen some of the history, this group has, has evaluated whether or not to approach the FAA and, and become obligated to, eligible and obligated for that FAA funding, I think you, I mean, I think you're in a neat spot to, as I mentioned, an opportunity, and, and you can do some things that Dallasport can't do with regards to hangar development and land leases. So, no, I don't, to answer your question, no, I don't see it as insurmountable.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Hopeful. Any other comments or questions? Would we need an additional airport committee meeting, Larry?
Actually, the next thing that'll happen is the bid opening is scheduled for March 2nd.
And didn't we do that?
And then, on March 7th, we'll hopefully bring it to the council for the notice of award.
Okay.
I don't know, there will need to have an airport committee meeting right away, but when we get started on some other hangar development and runway extensions and making applications to the Department of Transportation, I think then it would be a good idea to have an airport committee meeting sometime in the spring.
That'd be fine, thank you, Larry. Any further comments?
One more question? Have we got a, have we got a schedule for when we're going to discuss putting the jet A portion of the fuel system in?
I didn't hear that.
The jet A portion of the system, have we got, is that on a schedule for whether you'd like to further address that?
Corley, do you have, can you respond to that one?
Yeah, I mean, I'll start a little bit with the history, this, the grant request that the city initially made would have covered the avgas fuel system, jet A, and hangar development, when only about a quarter of that money was received in the form of the grant award, the airport committee helped and the city had to make some tough decisions on what's cut out, and so, really, all they could afford is one fueling system, and it made sense to start with an incremental approach and start with that avgas system for the local community, and then build upon it to jet A. And so, with, with the system we've designed, and with what I've seen by Mayor Cannon and Larry in the interest of the airport committee, I think as soon as funding's available. And so, that just really becomes the challenge, specific to a fuel system that's a revenue generator, those are not eligible for Washdaw aviation grants. And so, one thing that the airport committee and the city may want to consider is Washdaw does offer a very low-interest loan program, and there's been some other airports in the state that have taken on that loan, so they can install fuel systems. So, I, I think the answer is as soon as the, as soon as the money's available. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Anything else?
Mayor, I have a quick question.
Yes.
What about all this infrastructure bill that we know about from last year and what's coming up now, safety-related? Since we're looking at Liflight, DNR, things along those lines, this is infrastructure and this is safety-related, is there a potential of looking at the things at some of that money to speed the development of this? I don't know.
I didn't hear the infinitive.
I didn't hear that.
Could you repeat?
Yes, the, I'm, I'm talking about the infrastructure bill from last year and this, the year coming up. Is there, and I know it has to be safety-related, is there a way that we can use some of that funds to put into the airport to speed this up, since we are looking at firefighting helicopters and Liflight that would help to facilitate what is going on right now?
Well, that's, that's something we have to take a look at when, with the new infrastructure bill, is it passed, has the new infrastructure bill passed?
I, that, I, well, I, I think it has, and I'm not, I'm not certain, I shouldn't do that.
We have to take a look at that when it comes around.
I think he's talking about the money from the government, our, our big guy.
The ARP money? Yeah, well, that's going to require some, a lot of analysis and some public hearings probably, and on how we spend that million dollars. But there are restrictions on how it can be spent, so we'd love to take a look at how that relates to the airport and stuff like that.
Good. If there aren't any further comments or questions, Corley, we appreciate your, your update and the progress you're making, it's huge help for us, thank you.
Thank you, good to see everyone again, I'm ready, and once there's anything else from you, I'll go ahead and sign off.
Okay, thank you, Corley.
Thank you, Larry.
The next item is an update on the Byers Street improvements, and Dustin Conroy, I believe, can give us the details on that project.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Cannon, we're finishing up the design on that, and we're getting ready to go out to bid with that project and start advertising, I believe, the week of, well, next, next week, hopefully in the paper, with the bid opening expected on March 9th, is what we're currently scheduled for. The plan's still need to get approval from TID, that shouldn't be an issue, I've been working with them, and hopefully we'll get some good bids. I've been talking to a few contractors in the areas who have noticed it's going to be out to bid, and they're definitely interested in bidding it, which is good, a good bid answer this year compared to last year.
Anything further?
Any questions?
Any questions or comments from the council? We have a tremendous asset, and Dustin's working engineering on this particular Byers Street project, we appreciate it very much.
I give you a quick update too on the Central Surcrossing project, that project's
Good.
Currently going right now, we're just waiting on the manhole placed on the north side of the road. The one they sent out wasn't constructed correctly, so we sent that one back, we should get a new one this Friday, and we should be able to finish it up in the next ten days or so.
That's good, thank you, thank you. Any comments or questions on that project as well, the council? Do you have further things to report, Dustin, or should we close your update?
Nope, that's it for me.
Thank you, thanks ever so much, appreciate working with you. The next item, Larry Bellamy will present the details for a police car capital outlay for a new squad car, Larry?
This was part of our capital budget for the city of Goldendale, and it's being paid for out of the Public Safety Fund. This is a police car to replace one of the oldest in the fleet, and I thought Jay could maybe touch, touch a little bit on what's going wrong with the old one and the need for the new one, that it's time.
The oldest car in the fleet is a 2013, we've already replaced earlier last year. We've already replaced earlier last year timing belt and mechanisms in that area because we had an overheating problem. So we got that fixed. We've got, it's always had a problem, even when I was assigned to the car, there's a buzzing sound into the dash, and it's in the cluster of gauges, and what Ford has told us is that it's, one of these times that gear is going to give out, and then your gauges are just, most of your gauges are going to stop. So that's been an ongoing problem. The car is up there in mileage, unfortunately I don't have the mileage with me now, but it's quite a bit, and it's got little things falling apart. We've had to replace one of the visor brackets because one of the lights started coming down, and it's just starting to rock and roll and rattle, and it's time, it's time for it to go. It's 2013, and it's done its service.
Okay, we'll be using the state bid process, and so that's, is a way that you can purchase these vehicles without going through the full request for proposals and request for bid out in the general population. So we'd like to go ahead and make the moves to, to approve this capital outlay request, and the total cost is, has gone up a little bit, but so has a lot of vehicle costs. But last year, I think they went for around, last couple of years, they went for around $40,000.
Correct.
And we're up to $48,675.94. But we think it's appropriate timing to go ahead and get this new vehicle.
And that price includes that vehicle is being outfitted with the cage, the seats, you know, the sirens and all that stuff. The only thing that it will not have, which we already have, is our radio system. So the radio will come out of the 2013, which is still a good mobile radio. It'll go in the car, and then a docking station stand for the computers that we use, but, and the radar, we have radar everywhere, so the car is pretty much ready to go, except for the striping and the radios that we've got to put out.
Thank you, Chief. We'll need a motion concerning the capital project budget request. Do we have a motion?
Also, a little bit for the capital outlay from the police department? Seconded?
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the capital outlay request to purchase a new patrol vehicle, 2022 Ford Police Interceptor, in the amount of $48,000, $43,000, no, $48,675.94. Any further questions or comments from the council? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Larry will take up the next item, it's a council member's salary request, we had a discussion at one time, but it's connected to the fire department stipends, but it also turned to increasing the salary for our city council members, and this is just a discussion point, and I'll turn it over to Larry.
Well, actually, it's a little bit more than a discussion point.
Good.
There was a, there was a motion, and a motion was seconded and voted on by the group to raise the council member's salary from $100 to $200 per month. And then there were questions during that discussion about how it applies, given the fact that the council members can't vote themselves a raise, and so there's questions about how does that take effect? And it led, led me to MRSC, and MRSC led me to their blog posting or summary of how salaries for elected officials are changed. So the Constitution of Washington State prohibits any salary increase or decrease for a council member after an election and during the term of the office for those officials who set their own salary. So key, key is that you have to be elected, and you can't do it during the time you're elected, and you can't do it during the time you held that, that position, the term of that position. So for instance, let's take Andy Holm, for instance. He'll be, his term will expire, his election, his elected term will expire December 31st, 2023. On January 1st, 2024, whoever is in that position will get the increase. Similarly, if you are like Ellie Casey, your term doesn't, doesn't end until 2025. So, however, if somebody is appointed in the interim, they have to abide by the same rules as the elected position, term of the elected position of which they're taking. So that, so Ellie's position, it's not her, it's her position, will, cannot receive a raise until 2026. And the other thing then that you have to do is you have to, it says the code, the code states that the salaries of the council members shall be fixed by ordinance. So you can't just do it by the motion that we, we've already had, so we have to actually process an ordinance that affects that salary. So if you would like, I can, if there are no more questions, then you could direct me to draft an ordinance, and I can make that happen, unless you guys have other questions or you want to change mine or?
I would love to draft the ordinance sooner than later, for the, at least for the next people holding office.
Okay, I can do that.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll just do it based on concurrence. If there's concurrence, we'll go ahead and draft up the ordinance and for your approval at the next council meeting.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you, Larry, that's very, very helpful. That concludes the council business portion of this meeting, and we will go now to resolutions, and the resolution on tourism awards, and Larry Bellamy will give us the details on that step.
Well, we've been at this since about October, November timeframe of last year, and we did fund every, we did recommend that the event committee did recommend funding every request that was made by the group. There was a total of $65,390 worth of funding for all of the requests that were made. And so the recommendation of the event committee was to draw up a resolution that approved the recommendation of the event committee and funding of all the events for the full amount of their funding. So I would recommend that we go ahead and approve Resolution Number, we don't have a resolution, don't worry about it.
Okay.
Okay, the next, re, re-
721.
721? No, I guess I didn't have it on mine. Okay, we'll go 721 then.
Okay. Council, are there questions or comments? And we will need a motion to adopt this resolution.
I would move to adopt this resolution, is first.
And second? Moved and seconded to adopt Resolution Number 721, authorizing funding for tourism events and festivals in 2022 in the amount of $65,390. Any further comments or questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain due to my involvement in-
One of the events.
One of the events.
Sure.
Perfect.
Motion passes. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the report of officers and city administrator. I vote again with Larry Bellamy.
Okay, I'd like to just talk about a couple of committee meetings that we'd like to hold. The first one we'd like to hold is the Traffic Safety Committee meeting, which we would propose to be for 3:00, 3:00 p.m. next Monday, and the people on that committee are the mayor, myself, the public works supervisor, and the police chief, and one council member. I believe we all remember that we talked about this at a previous council member, council meeting, and we did ask Steve Johnson to be part of that Traffic Safety Committee, so he's, he will be notified of the time for the meeting. Just to give you an idea, some of the things that have been requested to be considered at the Traffic Safety Committee meeting is the East Broadway parking, should, not east, excuse me, west. On the east side, we have no parking all the way down to Highway 97. We'd like to, one suggestion was that we'd like to continue that going west, all the way at 142 to the city limits. So that's one thing they'd like to discuss, and then we had a discussion today with Steve and his job out at the schools about the Traffic Safety Committee meeting, looking at, I'll call it the school safety corridor. We have three schools, and we just need to look at, are there any better ways to sign it, to redirect it, to make it safer for the kids? So they'd like to be part of that Traffic Safety Committee meeting to discuss that issue. So I'll let you know now, do you want me to call Dean, or do you, you can get hold of him?
I'll take care of it.
3:00, 3:00 o'clock on the 14th of February. We will do it in this room, since there'd be quite a group of us. So that's one, and then secondly, we've had a couple of requests for some more minor ordinance changes, and so I'd like to have the ordinance committee meet to talk about animal control fee increase ordinance, which has been drafted by the police department, they'd like the ordinance committee to take a look at that, and the building code fee adoption ordinance, we'd like to take a look at that. And then there's one small development standard that's been kind of cropping its little head up, and we'd like to take a look at that one. It's regarding where the front entrance are for single-family dwellings, and the code says that they shall be facing the street on which it's numbered. Let's create some havoc with some of these narrower lots, and so sometimes they want to have the doors on the side instead of out in front. And so we've had some contractors say that, you know, that that's a hindrance to our ability to utilize the lot in the way that we'd like to, especially since it's a narrow lot. So they'd like us to take a look at that as well. So that ordinance committee meeting is scheduled for 6:00 p.m. on the same day, which would be the 14th of February. So I don't know who's on the ordinance committee.
Yeah, I am, the same.
And you?
And that's also the same day of council meeting, isn't it?
No. Council meeting is actually on the 22nd. It's the day after President's.
Oh, okay, you're right. You're right, excuse me, I, okay, 6:00 p.m.?
On?
14th.
On the 14th.
Are you bringing flowers and chocolate? Are you bringing flowers and chocolate that day?
Yeah, I guess so, is that the 14th?
That is the 14th. I might suggest to change that date unless we're going to be drafting divorce papers.
How about if we do it for Tuesday?
That sounds better.
14th, well, sorry about that.
We're saving your marriage, Barry.
Yes, I guess so.
Not just ours.
14th, yeah.
Okay, is that?
That's, that's fine, it'll be 15, 6:00 p.m. Very good.
I better mark it down so I don't forget.
Mark the 14th down, too.
Buy, buy flowers and candy?
Leftover, I'll bring leftover candy on the 15th.
But you're going to keep the traffic safety meeting at February 14th?
Yeah, it's during the day, you aren't going out for dinner yet, are you?
During business hours.
We should be fine. We'll have to cut it off at 5:00. Okay, that's all I have.
Very good, thank you, Larry. We're getting with council now, we'll start with Andy Holm. Phil?
I do, I have a couple of things, actually, it'll be for the ordinance committee, but I wanted to bring it up to everybody.
Well, that was timed, yeah.
Yes, so this is a draft ordinance that I've been working on with Chief Holm and the fire department for adding the availability of adding fees to certain calls. I think we brought it up there, maybe like 2019, pre-COVID, and then it kind of died down because everything else happening. So just to be clear, as you guys read it, this would not add any fees to existing residents on fire calls. However, there is an expense that is added when it involves a semi truck, it involves vehicle accidents and hazmat incidents of that nature. The tax base does not normally cover for those type of calls, it covers for fire protection for your homes. And so that is an added expense that the fire department has been incurring along, all along. RCW allows for that charge to be, and there's other cities that make those charges to the insurance companies that the individual carries. So the, the plan would be to contract with a company that does the billing, there is no charge for no bills, it's only charged on collected amounts, and there would be a different safety guards in place so that our citizens are not incurring the bill. And essentially what it does is, when we have large trucks, semis, driving through the area, even the 97, and our fire department has responded as well, we're footing the bill for the absorbent and, you know, the, the response, including the wear and tear on the trucks. Well, those people, the companies don't pay taxes in both of those, they're just driving by, so this would help offset some of that cost.
Very good. Good move.
So like I said, it wouldn't be a charge to the citizens, and there would be different safety guards in place for, you know, minor vehicle accidents so that the individuals are not being charged for them. So anyways, so I would like to bring that up, but make everybody aware so that, I know fire departments charging stuff may bring up a lot of questions, so. And then the other one is, we had talked about it at different meetings, and I just want to make sure that it don't fall through the cracks. So I drafted this, so you can red pen over it. The other one, I had some assistants run, but this one is basically providing lifeline coverage for all our employees, I believe. Fire department volunteers were one of the first groups that the council made the change to get lifeline coverage for, which is really important, especially when, when you think of the potential danger and the need for a trauma center for a firefighter, you know. And I think, so the next one that received lifeline is the police department, right, through their union contract has lifeline insurance. But that leaves a small segment of employees that are very valuable to us, that we wouldn't be able to do a lot of the work with. So by doing that in ordinance, I think it would cover those employees that we've left out in a bird beak to get that coverage. I also included for city council, and because I knew where you were going to go with this, I put on there that current city council members would not be eligible until their end of term and new term begins. However, I think it would be appropriate to say that as the discount, as the group becomes larger, there may be an additional discount for a large, large account, large membership, and then that way, existing council members and the mayor may purchase that as part of the group and get that benefit, even though they're not, the city can't pay for them just yet during this term. So that's on there, and I think that would cover that, that technicality, but might benefit from, from getting that discount a little bit, so. And it was, I bring that up, too. So anyways, I bring that up, too. And then you can look at it and what the status is.
Have a discussion of our ordinance for the under fifteen.
Yep.
One of my comments, Mayor, is this is a good program, and you do get a discount after so many, I don't know what, I think it's reduced, used to be it's reduced to forty-five dollars per person. And now that also covers your family, too, which is really a good. I mean, if you had a child or one of your, living in your home up to twenty-one or twenty-two or something like that, it'll be covered, you know. So really, but far as the, yeah, I used to have it when I was a fire commissioner. Anyway, yeah, no, I think that's very good. I really support this.
Very good work.
Thanks, Larry.
And that's all I have.
And this will just go as study and be on the next agenda.
Check my spending on it.
Sure was the intention was great. Thank you, Phil.
And I can send it to you on Word documents, so that it be easier.
Very good.
Mylan Wallin.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I just want to say again, I repeated to the last meeting, I think we're doing very well on the improvements and the future plans of the airport. Then on ICJ, you were looking, well, found out that a lot of bills that the legislature didn't give out of committee. And so some of the bills you were looking at for police reform, do you know of any that got out that you were interested in, or did you happen to see that?
I haven't got any updates on what exactly they're doing, but a lot of the bills, especially one of the bigger ones, House, which was House Bill thirteen-ten, which is the use of force. And they're also looking at the pursuit one, is changing those to where it gives us more of the opportunity to detain without probable cause of a crime while we're investigating something. And also, I don't know if it'll change or not, but the fact that like if somebody is in crisis, a mental crisis, right? Right now, the way the bill is written, you know, being in a mental crisis is not a crime. We cannot touch them, right? They need to go to the hospital and see, get with mental health. But we can't force them. We can't grab them by their arms, because that's considered force, right? And if they decide they don't want to, and we go to fighting, and somebody gets hurt, the police department along with the city is going to get sued. And it really puts comprehensive mental health in a pickle, because they're like, why don't, why can't you do that? We can't touch them. Legal, our legal advisors say unless you have probable cause, that they're involved in a crime, you cannot use force, period. Don't touch them. So hoping that gets that, what I'm, from Waspic, they said the legislators have recognized that, yeah, these bills need to be fixed. They're not going to go away, but hopefully they fix something to it. And Waspic's following that. But I haven't got a full update. As soon as I get something on the bills of what is, what the, the way they're leaning and doing, I'll definitely make a presentation to the council on that.
Yeah, okay, yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Appreciate it. Ethan Hillsman.
No, that's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Elliot Casey. Dave?
Oh, just one thing I was thinking about. A few months ago, when we, you know, made the decision to keep doing the flowers, we mentioned that, you know, maybe it would be beneficial to hire somebody to water those other than our public works crew. Remember that?
Yes.
Now, I was wondering, you know, it's getting to be almost springtime, and, you know, is that a feasibility thing that would pay off, do you think?
Well, I don't want to throw cold water on your idea, but we've tried it in the past, have volunteers come in. And the problem is, there's a lot of things that you have to be watching out for. You have heat, you have wind, you have hazards. You've got the time that a person needs to come and spend, and then somebody to oversee all of that. That's why we decided to go ahead and have one of our public works crew do it, because they can pay attention to those factors. Not to say that somebody else couldn't pay attention to them, but you're going to have to find somebody that really wants to do it and can pay attention to those things, and that like has a green thumb, I suppose.
Right, right. Is one, I was just thinking, does it make financial sense to save some of that money that you'd be paying a public works employee over time and whatnot to transfer some of that responsibility?
I'm sure it would. It's just a matter of the, keeping the flowers looking nice and that kind of stuff. So sometimes it takes, you know, sometimes we water the flowers twice a day.
Right.
But if we can find the right person, I suppose there's an opportunity there. Do you know of anybody?
Well, not right off the top of my head.
Well, can we do a study on that, or write up? If you call, if you like that position, that job, you have to have this so much.
You have to have that availability?
Yeah, right. Not just anybody could ask for that job. You have to have a certain qualifications. And you probably would have to have maybe your own vehicle. I assume the city would pay for the water, would provide the water.
Right.
But then.
It'd almost be better if the person was actually hired by the city.
Well, yeah, yeah.
As a part-time job? I was going to say, it would have to either be a group if you source it out, because if that individual goes on vacation for the Fourth of July, will have that flowers in a day.
Well, and if you have a, if you have an employee do it, then the public works can fill in for that time that they might be on.
But maybe we can hire like a seasonal job? We can take a look at that. Without benefits and things like that, and then even in the summer, the seasonal employee could be, you know, some kid from school that can drive the city vehicle.
Yeah.
Because what was brought up, you know, before was, you know, having a city public works employee doing it certain days of the week, and then the possibility of an outside contractor.
Well, I like the idea of an employee, because we have a little bit closer oversight of the person, and we can help watch the issues, the factors that we need to watch for. And we can have a little bit closer oversight, maybe, having that person check in with the public, at the public workshop, and, you know, make sure that their truck is all ready to go, and the water tank is full, and just do all those things necessary to maintain the flowers. And I think that having them close at hand would be a better situation than saying, then with a, like with a contractor or something like that.
Okay.
And then plus, we do have a salary rate we can use that's above minimum wage, a little bit above minimum wage.
So we put, is it about May? Is that when we generally put the flowers out in the past?
Sometime around the middle of May.
Yeah, so we want to know in April, who?
Yeah, we better get busy.
Yeah, okay, that's what I have.
Thanks.
That was all for me. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Warren Baker, nothing. Okay. Appreciate you being here, though. And on the mayor's side, I don't have anything to add to the discussions tonight. Go now to public comment. And those who might wish to make a public comment, there's a three-minute limit, and please give your name and address. Now, is there anybody here for public comment tonight, or on the line for public comment?
Do a public comment, because that's my other hat now. So I just wanted to bring up the discussion and bills and legislature. Senate Bill fifty-five-fifty-five has to do with the emergency communications officers or 911 dispatchers in the state. Right now, it is in another committee. It's in the Rose Committee for a second reading. And I would like to ask everyone for their support in reaching out to their legislators and asking for support. The Senate Bill fifty-five-fifty-five basically asks for certification of emergency communications officers or dispatchers to be certified through the state. As part of the first responder community, they are, 911 dispatchers and poll takers are the only group in the chain that is not certified through any means within the state law enforcement post, post academy, fire services, reaches several certifications, same as EMS. And while our 911 center does an excellent job at educating and obtaining national standards, having that additional standard meant through the state would mean a lot. It would also recognize, Senate Bill fifty-five-fifty-five also recognizes communications officers are as part of the first responders. They are the first ones on scene through the phone and providing lifesaving instructions to the caller so that they can start the lifesaving process until they arrive. So I would ask everyone that you will support that. And simple, log into the website. You can do a Google search, Senate Bill fifty-five-fifty-five. And then it'll guide you to reach your legislature and send a comment of support.
Very good. Thanks, Phil. That's a very useful suggestion. Anybody else for a public comment? Either here in the council room or online?
Online.
Pardon me?
There's nobody here.
No one there? Okay. Not hearing any public, any further public comment. We will go ahead to adjournment of the meeting. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved forward. Go right on that, you know.
I'll second.
Blinding speed in the city council. Been moved and seconded to adjourn city council for February seventh, 2022. All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you. Motion passes. We're adjourned.